Village Board of Trustees, it's order Monday, March 2nd. Audience members are requested to sign in on the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard and not to stop listening on the agenda may speak under items listed. Citizens may be given the opportunity to speak during discussion of items listed on the agenda. They're allowed three minutes for discussion or comments. This is a review of discussion or you will not be allowed. You'll call the officers.
Here.
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 Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizen participation, citizens are to address the board only. Statements are limited to three minutes. The board may not respond to items if not listened on the agenda. However, you may ask for an item to be placed on future agendas. Any citizens, you're on the agenda tonight, right? Okay. Announcements, any announcements? President's Business and Staff Reports, Library Heather.
All right, thank you. Just been working on a lot of my continuing education. My license certification expires in May, so I'm trying to finish that up so I can get all the paperwork submitted so I can keep my position. So I've been working on that. And this week we also have a beginning meeting course, and we do have, I think it's three or four spots available yet. So we're hoping that we'll be able to offer some more advanced, but this is like a starter course, but we'll hopefully be able to offer some more intricate beating down the road. And then for book club, we're reading the book that everybody's reading now, that's been reading, Really Proud of the South. And so that's on Saturday, March 21st at 9:00 AM. Everybody's welcome to come and discuss. That's all I have.
Heather, when is it, beating class?
The beating is this week, Thursday, and it starts at 5:30.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reader, Nick.
Thanks. As I mentioned in my weekly report, the week before last, we had a server crash on a Friday. It was a Thursday night, which caused basically our systems all to be shut down on that Friday, which was quite a day of dealing with that. And then by Monday, we were back up and running. So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday was kind of spent getting everything back up and running because everything doesn't always come back on the way they're supposed to. And then following that up, we had on Thursday or Friday of last week, all of our iPhone users stopped getting emails, and we had a certificate expire. And got that fixed late Friday afternoon. And then this morning, as I got in the office this morning, realized that none of our computers were receiving emails. So I spent about half the day today fixing that. So we're all up and running now. I shouldn't say I fixed it, I just assisted the IT people fixing it. So everything's firing right now on our IT department. Hopefully that stays quiet for some time. Also, last week, on Thursday, and well, it was scheduled for Thursday and Friday, our Baker Tilly was here to complete the utility audits. They actually were only here Thursday because they got everything done, and they were out of here by 4:30, which is probably the earliest I think they've ever left in one day. So everything obviously went well if they were able to get everything taken care of. They had a few questions, but really not a lot of issues. And a lot of that's credited to all the, you know, the software upgrades and the way we're doing. Our utility billing clerk is very sharp and keeps very good notes. And, you know, processes that have been changed over the last 10 years have really cleaned up a lot of that. So I remember when it used to take two or three days of them being here, eight to 12 hours a day. So that's great that we can get it done in a day now. That doesn't mean that we're only working on it a day, but they're only here a day. We also sent out, I talked about the exempt property mailings. We sent those out last week. They're due back to my office, I think by March 13th, I think I put on there. That's basically just properties that are exempt, and there are some exemptions to the exemption, but certain properties that are exempt need to basically report approximately how much their valuation is, and then we need to report that to the state. We need to do that on every even year, so that's the first time I've had to go through that process. Also, the spring election is April 7th, so that's, you know, we're starting to get, we'll be getting absentee ballots here in the next couple of weeks. I think the 16th is the latest we'll get them. So, you know, getting prepared for that, a lot of people registering to vote online and taking care of that stuff and being prepared because we expect a large turnout. Also continue to work with the final county IT department. We have the fiber in the building now that we now, I think, are up and running fully on. There was only one final, and that's for the police department. The one final little glitch was that they couldn't print out of that computer, but they're still working on that. But that is up and running now, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Nick. Police Department, Darren.
Thank you. We continue to work on hiring, made a couple of conditional offers, and should be wrapping those processes up in the next week or two. We are in the process of wrapping up our annual evaluations in the police department. I think we have two more left to do, so we'll be done with those this week. And then our spring newsletter should be coming out later this week. It was supposed to be out by today, but running just a little bit behind, but it should be out later this week.
You blame it on the server issue.
Yeah, it's right. I blame it on the server issue.
Thanks, Darren. Fire EMS Jake.
Thank you. Like I said in my weekly report, the association, Fire Department Association, has donated a substantial amount of money for new nozzles for the department. We will be replacing nozzles that have been on the engines for eight to 12 years, depending on when they were purchased. So over the last year and a half, the association has donated just under $20,000 for ice-water rescue equipment, the nozzles, a couple spare pieces of equipment that are on our new engine that I will show tonight for those of you that are going to attend. And they donated some stuff for our Zodiac boat. So I appreciate everything that they've given to us. Definitely takes a burden off the village as a whole and the taxpayers donating that amount of money. And we do have our Barat Frye on March 14th. We'll be starting probably around nine or 10 in the morning selling, and that'll run to like 3:30 in the afternoon. Ironically, that day we have our awards banquet, so we're going to be getting out of there hopefully by 3:30 or 4:00 in the afternoon. But please stop by if anybody's interested in helping out at the table. I was reached out by Keith King, and he sounds like he's going to stop by and help us out for a little bit. So if anybody's interested, let me know, and I will get you a timeframe and when we may need a little bit of assistance. Like I said, also, our call volume is pretty crazy so far this year. 502 is up 32 runs compared to where it was at last year, which is a 300% increase, which is pretty insane. So we've been working through that. 911 is up somewhat, I guess. It's like our typical five to seven percent. But 502 has been doing really well. I have a meeting tomorrow with Aurora Medical Center in Oshkosh, and I will be going to discuss interfacility transports, and we're hoping that a lot of good comes from that. And lastly, the demonstration tonight, I got quite a few guys in the back that will be going through capital purchases over the last year and a half or so, including the King Vision, our new Jaws unit for our new engine. And we'll be showing you guys the capabilities of our new engine, as well as a couple other pieces of equipment. So that is all I have.
Thanks Jake.
Yep.
Public Works Department Darren.
Thank you. Been a little bit busy the last couple of weeks. We did have a main break last week that the crew repaired. It was about a six-hour project. It was a deeper section of Maine on the 1200 block of Minnesota Avenue. And then crew has also been out exposing all the catch basin inlets, removing the snow, so spring thaws shouldn't back up for us if we get a nice slow melt like we're having right now. Crew has been also out, we're getting right down there on ash tree removal. By the end of tomorrow, we should have all the ash trees that we can reach from the street with our lift. We don't want to take the lift onto any grass areas because it's just going to rut it up and sink. So what'll be left after tomorrow should be just Lemieux Park, Optimist Park, some trees at the pool, and a couple of trees at the community center. The other thing that we've been doing is we've been removing some trees in some of the waterways, and we were discussing that Mitch and I were discussing a couple other waterways that we're going to try to address throughout the summer. And then I spent most of my last week, actually two weeks, getting stuff ready for the PSC report that the auditors do, and that went pretty smoothly with them on Thursday also.
Thanks Darren. Consent agenda, approve the minutes of the following village board meeting, February 17th, 2020, and approve invoices and authorize checks to be drawn on their respective funds as indicated. General fund, $80,249.28. Library fund, $146,73. EMS fund, $9,878.79. Capital projects, $893. Water department, $1,438.50. Waste water department, $317,504.93. Storm water fund, $151.75. Grand total, $410,262.98. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as red.
I got a second.
I'll second that motion.
Are there any questions? Or we got a motion by Will, a second by Stutz. Are there any questions or comments on this?
A question for Darren here, just the waste bill, those 95 gallon refuge carts for 1651. How many is that by?
Twenty-five.
Okay. So what's that come out of the piece about? Twenty-five, that would be...
It's 1651.
Yeah.
About twenty-five. Sixty-six dollars a piece.
That isn't so bad.
With shipping.
That ain't bad, okay. Just kind of curious.
They get delivered by truck also.
All right, thank you.
We're seeing a very large increase in people asking for those 90 gallons now that we've kind of made it all the same price.
Now we got all those smaller ones, huh?
Nah, we're getting down there.
We're fine there, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Are the new ones holding up better than the other ones?
Most of the cans that we still have in the system are from back in, when we started back in 1992. Over the years, things break on them, handles break. Some of them have gotten weak over the years, but most of the ones in the system are still the originals.
Cool. All right. If there aren't any other questions, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Administrative discussion and possible action, Minnesota Avenue, on-street parking between Cleveland Street and McKinley Street. Does everybody have the maps?
Yes.
Anybody want to?
You got one. I gave that gentleman one already. I don't know. I'm sorry, what was your name?
Gary.
Gary, thank you. And I could start the discussion on this.
Is everybody good enough?
Yeah, we're good. So just the map in front of you is what it's, the daycare early learning center on Minnesota Avenue would be, the large building complex that you see in the middle. We've had complaints, you know, on and off over the years about the parking situation over there from the resident, mainly from the residents across the road, and that people park in front of their driveways, and it's, you know, that there's, if you've ever driven down there when it's busy, it's not a great situation. When the school passed a referendum, there was a plan to take down a portion of this building and expand the parking lot, which would have taken care of most of this situation, but that didn't happen when they, I think they ended up spending that, maybe that money on other parts of the school that they decided through the process needed more work on them than what they expected. So most recently, I would say the last couple of weeks, we've had more complaints. We've had, we've had, have issued parking citations to some people. And what the issue becomes is people dropping off their kids at the daycare slash school, they're parking on the east side of Minnesota, and many times blocking portions of the driveways, fire hydrants, or even blocking right in front of driveways. So with that, I talked to the police chief, and I also talked to Aaron Sadoff, I also talked to the person that runs the daycare in this school, and I talked to Darren with DPW. We all kind of came to the same conclusion that with this no longer really having a school, as far as, like it used to be utilized, there was several buses coming in and out of here. And if you look at this map, the red area is all kind of marked off as bus parking only. The interesting thing, when I look at this aerial, is, I don't know when this was taken, probably a couple of years ago, but if you look at, the yellow lines on here are basically driveways. The green on the right side is where they can park for two hours. But if you look at where all the cars are parked, you know, you look at all those little spaces where these cars are parked, in that whole red area, there's nobody parked, you know, because it's marked. So we're looking at this going, we can put one bus stall right in front of that school and give them adequate room to get in and out, and then turn the whole rest of this red section into drop-off parking to the north. Does that make sense? So basically from the, where that building turns from light gray to dark black roofing, from that point there almost all the way to McKinley Street, we're proposing that let's just turn that back into normal parking. And we're thinking, you know, maybe we sign it as drop-off zone, 20-minute parking, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then what we're thinking on the opposite side where all the residents are, is make that, with the exception of the very south end of the block where those four cars are parked where it's green, there's a fair amount of area there where people could park. But what we're proposing then is for more that yellow starts all the way to McKinley Street, is signing it and saying, no parking Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Couple reasons for that. Number one, we've got, the resident here, Gary, will probably at some point speak his piece about what he sees, because he lives right there. But secondly, from our standpoint, it's definitely a safety concern also, and then same with the schools, there's, and if you've ever driven down there when it's busy, you got cars parked on both sides, you've got people crossing the road where they're not supposed to be crossing because there's not crosswalks, and it's really hard to just pay attention driving down there sometimes, and all these cars are pulling in and out and on both sides. So the first, you know, the first reason obviously is for that safety of, if we open it up to just one side, and that, you're going to have a much wider area to drive, you're going to have less blind spots, you won't have people crossing the street. And secondly, then, we will avoid, hopefully avoid, these driveway issues of people parking in front of driveways. And I think the frustration comes from, you know, the residents, somebody parks in front of their driveway, you know, they may call the police department, by the time we get there, maybe they're gone, and it's just not a good situation the way it is right now. So that's our initial thoughts. I did talk to the school, Aaron Sadoff, today, he was unavailable last week when I, we started discussing this. And then I did reach out to the lady that runs the daycare there, and they're on board with some version of this, they're, and I said, you know, we'll have to work through it. It's going to take a little bit of time to probably figure out exactly how it's all going to work. And they're supportive of that, and they're also supportive of notifying the parents that are parking there and dropping kids off, and getting the word out to them. So that's kind of a summary of where we've come since probably about last Wednesday or so. And I guess at that, I'll leave it open for discussion.
So when you talked to Arts for Kids...
Yep.
Did they, did they say why everybody was like starting to park on the street? Because they used to deliver up there a couple of years ago, and I don't remember being in congestion with Early Learning Center, going back to, you know, to Friendship, and that building, back to the white top building, that was the maintenance shop, and that's, now that's gone, so that frees up more parking. I don't know why they're all not parking behind there, because the entrance is behind there, I believe. I mean, that's...
You're talking about...
Like for parking for staff?
Well, staff, most of the staff is parking in the parking lot, and that's another discussion. I mean, that should be, they're aware that if some staff are parking, they're going to talk to their staff. Most of the staff is parking back there. It is certainly not a parking lot that's set up very well for drop, because we talked about that too, for a large bus to go in there and turn around and drop kids off, it's not set up well for that. So that was kind of our first thought. But as far as people dropping kids off, the other problem, the other thing that's causing a problem, I think, is that if the northern sidewalk that you see on here, there's two sidewalks that go to the building. The one to the north is no longer used, that part of the building is blocked off, so they have to come up to this main entrance. So I'm guessing that's part of the reason why people aren't parking way down there to walk. But if we make it no parking, they don't have a choice, and I think that's the safest route to go.
Good.
For the what?
The person in the building that's a black roof or the dark roof is not in use anymore.
At all?
No.
It's not where the daycare is?
No.
No, the daycare moved to the early learning center part, and then the early learning center part moved to Friendship.
So what they have there is daycare, they have 4K there, and then they have, is it the alternate learning?
Oh, yeah. ALC.
Alternative learning center.
Alternative learning center, thank you. So the kids that are being bused are only those 4K kids that end up, you know, going, some of those kids get bused from the school to there, and some of them leave there and go to the school for half-day kindergarten. So that's the buses. So they never have more than one bus at a time, where they used to have several buses, and they needed that larger area.
And I think you're up for...
Yeah, I guess what concerns that daycare have, you said that they were mostly on board.
They, the main thing they were concerned about is having the, originally we thought about maybe having the bus parking way down by the intersection, but then with talking with them, it wouldn't make sense for, you know, those 10 or 15 kids that have to walk all the way down the sidewalk. So we, they wanted, their main concern was that the buses had enough room to get in and out safely.
Okay.
And that we didn't, you know, pinch them in there where they had to parallel park, and they, they don't want any of their bus students crossing the road, and I'm aware of that, so, so I think we can accommodate that.
I've driven through there at that time, and you're right, there are people like all over the place, and having them not cross the road, I think, is a good idea. Are they concerned about there being enough?
Well, that's one concern, and I said that's one thing, we're just going to have to kind of see how it goes. But the alternative is people are just going to have to park on a different, you know, down the block or something, you know, maybe on McKinley Street to the east.
Because you can park down here, right?
Or wait for someone else to pull over.
Yeah, okay.
And they still have access in the back too for drop-off if they wanted to, I mean, they used to use that for the drop-off also for the, or for the daycare. Randy, is that all you got, man?
Yep.
I just have a question. So this 20-minute parking here, is that what it's currently now, or is that what the proposal is?
That's just something I kind of came up with for...
Okay, because the only concern that I have with that is that occasionally there might be a soccer game in there. I mean, are you going, in that soccer field there?
Yep.
I mean, and those games are usually before 6:00 PM.
So my suggestion for the 20-minute parking, Randy, just so you know, was only going to be from wherever this bus zone is to McKinley Street.
So...
Just this section.
But so are you getting rid, you're getting rid of this down here?
So the blue would just stay as whatever it is right now.
It says 20-minute parking.
Oh, it is 20-minute parking.
Yeah.
But that's not, is there 6:00 PM, and soccer games are probably before that?
Well, I mean, they potentially, I mean, they would start prob, I mean, they could be completed by 6:00 PM. I'm just thinking, you know, you've got, you know, I know you've got parking, some people park along Cleveland Street.
Right.
And then you've got the other side, you've got the west side or the east side of Minnesota, you know, but I'm just thinking, you know, there, potentially there could be a soccer game, you know, at that point.
Do you have any?
A lot of people park on Cleveland and down Besseot, and then park up.
I mean, I guess from my perspective, I don't, if that blue didn't have any limits at all, I wouldn't be concerned about it.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think people getting in and out of there in 20 minutes is the issue. I think that it's just a matter of stopping to drop kids off.
Right. But I think if we, my concern was that if we opened this bus, if we got rid of this busing area and just made it, you know, parking, then we end up having people possibly sitting there all the time, and now there's not good flow for people to drop kids on, up off, so. So I think we definitely need to limit a portion of it to this 20-minute parking, and maybe, maybe that's the suggestion, we just, whatever's red right now would be 20-minute parking, and maybe a little bit further, maybe to the entrance, to the driveway entrance to the soccer field. And then the rest of that block from there south, we could say, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to restrict it off.
Yeah. I mean, that is only, it's a daily restriction.
It doesn't happen, I mean, sometimes they may move a game from the athletic, from Humphrey Field over there, if they've got a JV game or something like that, that's the only thing I've...
I think the best solution for now is going to be kind of treating it as a temporary solution and seeing how it works. And we don't want to go and spend a bunch of money on signs and find out two months from now that it didn't work. So I think we just treat it as a temporary situation, play it, see how it goes, and then go from there.
Thank you.
Mike?
I was going to say, Peter, Randy, there, but I do agree, like, an entrance to the soccer field would be a good spot again, the 20-minute parking.
Okay.
And with the other entrances to the building, you think making that, you think the whole strip to the, could you make it from that sidewalk to the corner where we're parking down there? I think that would muddy up things a little bit.
I think we just make it 20 minutes the rest of the way, because the only, the other option, the other concern again is, you know, you have employees or something that park the car there all day, or even residents across the road, if they wanted to, they could park there all day, and then that takes away the flow of people being able to drop their kids off, and if there's a car parked in the middle, you know.
What about the 6:00 PM, is that, is that, is that, would that be more denied?
Well, I think that's the daycare hours, and that's kind of what was set up that way. I know it starts at 6:00 AM. Do you know, the 6:00 PM, is it...
They're usually done by 5:00, there's people coming.
Is it ever an issue that later in the afternoon, or is it more?
It depends on what's going on, and if they have teacher conferences and that, it's just the best. But as far as I was concerned, the site that I'm on, you don't want to shut that down completely, because if the residents want to park there on that site...
You need to shut it down completely, or it's going to be a problem.
Here's the problem I have.
There's no way, there's no way that you can expect the police department to be there when somebody pulls up and parks that isn't supposed to, but there's cars parked there. Because when people drive up, if they see a car parked, they're going to assume it's okay for me to park and drop people off. They're not going to look at the signs.
Right, yeah.
That's the problem that we have going on right now. It's exactly that. Everything is limited there. Clearly, you can't park in front of a driveway, you don't need a sign that tells you that, but yet people are doing it, because they see other cars and they think, well, they can do it, I can do it.
Right.
And so they're going to stop and do it. The only way we're going to stop people from doing that is if we limit, if we make that entire thing, no parking. That's the only way to fix that.
Here's another idea I have for you.
Could you, could you please state your name and address?
Okay, my name is Gary A. Brown. I live at 920 Minnesota Avenue.
Thank you.
A few of the neighbors in the area said they have a great idea too. Why don't they have along the south side of this school, they have a driveway there before the soccer field, put a parking lot right there along the school. People get, pull in there, they take their kids out, they walk their kids right into the school. People are complaining that they want, they want to park the way they are, because they don't want to have to walk, because it's too far for them to carry all their kids in, then they got to carry them all back out if they're dropping off one kid. And now you have a sign out there that says, it's put for, it's supposed to be in a crosswalk. They have it out in the middle of the street, and it says, "Crosswalk only." Right at the bottom, it says, "This sign is only valid in the crosswalk only." They got it out by the school, down by my house, in the middle of the street. It's been like that for four months. And I said something to the school, and they just said, "Oh, somebody just took it and threw it over there." They have no idea who did it.
What's their sign?
Theirs...
It used to be up by Cleveland in Minnesota.
Yeah. And then the other day, the cars that got ticketed the other day, one of them got ticketed because they were in my driveway, and both the employees worked at the school. There was a car in front, and she had like four feet in front of her, but she had a big There was a car in front and she had like four feet in front of her, but she had a big pickup truck, set us parking right up close, she stayed back. And it took her four hours to come out and move her truck. And it was set, both of those vehicles were there all day until almost noon. And then they leave, so there's a two-hour parking span there, but they're using it as for, for, uh, for whatever they want, cause they know nobody will ticket them. And I, I don't wanna keep calling the police all the time, you know, they got other stuff to do, you know. But that's what we were told to do, is, you know, when we call, they say, well, contact the police department and if you get their license plate, and I had the license plate of the girl's car, truck. So, the cop, police officer pulled right in, right, my driveway, and I told them they could use my driveway to. To ticket them, if they ever have to have a problem with them and come down there and take care of it. Or, maybe you could hire somebody to be like a meter maid type thing in that area. And they would give out tickets during those times, that might solve it too, you know, all depends, I know it costs money, but hey, if the school can take the money and use it somewhere else.
Do you, do you know if a lot of your neighbors park on the street?
Uh, I do once in a while and so does my next door neighbors, in fact, he's got a red pickup truck out there right now. I know there are days like when the garbage is supposed to be picked up, he'll put his garbage cans right out into the street so that nobody can park there. So that he can get in and out of his driveway, cause he's got a narrow driveway. I don't think, I don't know if it's legal or not, but he does it. So, but that's all I got to say, so, I, I'm just trying to find out a better solution because I see people, even with that sign there, they just whip right through there and there's kids there. I almost hit a kid. Because the lady went like this to her kid and she ran out and jumped right over in front of my car and it was just lucky that I had moved up. So, but she kinda looked at me like it was my fault, cause I was on the street, so.
All right.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Chuck?
You know, I like the idea too, kids not having to cross the street and as Ann said, it's kinda crazy when the kids are getting out, you drive about two miles an hour through their case of kid. Is it possible, you know, to kind of, you know, when you say some of the residents like to park in it, could they have a sign saying parking here by permit only? And then the permits would be given, no charge perhaps, you know, just to be able to park out on the street, I mean, that. A lot of times that deters people from parking there if they don't have a permit, which nobody would have a permit, but that's just another possible thought.
Wait, like from where Chuck, like from the soccer field entrance to?
McKinley.
McKinley?
Yeah.
Just on the, on the east side?
East side, I mean, that's in a sense what you were proposing, possibly no parking there at all, I think.
Well, it would be just, just from, just Monday through Friday and then hours, so the residents, they thought behind that, I don't mean their, my kid is flagging it, but. The thought behind that was, that way the residents could park overnight in front of their house, you know, whether we, whether we say it's from six to, um, four PM or five PM or six PM. But I guess the question I have for that is, what qualifies you to get a permit, how do you get a permit?
Well, that would come through the village, I mean, even that sign would, you know, mean that, I'm not sure if that's up, the issue permit you could put on the windshield or not, you know, I mean, something that, you know.
I just, I get, I get a little nervous about that, cause public street parking is public street parking and if we're. Giving precedence to the residents that live there, they have no more right to park there than somebody dropping their kid off in, in the sense of a public right away, so.
Just another thought, yeah.
Oh, Mike?
Could, so you're thinking on the east side, right, now you're gonna have no parking from six to six on school days, is that correct?
Yep.
On the east side?
Yep.
After that, they can park at night, but they'd have to get out, move their car by six AM, is that correct?
Yep.
And there's even odd thing about snow removal, that would apply?
Yep.
But this gentleman brought up a good point, I mean, I couldn't just imagine how the garbage truck gets their garbage picked up in that, that street with all those cars and like you said, you gotta pull them out in front of the driveway, so. That would help with, uh, the garbage pickup if there was no parking a certain period of day.
And I think if you look at, I mean, we certainly have areas in the village where. On-street parking is very important to people that live because they have very short driveways and no garages, if you look at the houses from the aerials even on here, everybody's got attached garages, everybody's got pretty long driveways. I don't think there's a lot of residents that park on the street often, is that, would that be correct, I mean, there.
I only do it once in a while, like if I have my trailer on.
Right.
You know, or something like that, you know, it's not all the time, but the guy next to me has his truck most of the time out, cause he has.
To the north of you? To the north of you or to the?
Yeah, to the north of me.
But I, I also agree with, with Darren's comment earlier, I mean, you, we can't dictate who parks where, so if, if there's parking allowed, it's gonna continue to be a problem, I mean, that's just the. And they can only police it so much, I mean, there's, there's the. It's, it's set up, it's setting it up for a bad situation if we allow parking there, because if, if there's an open stall and it's five feet short of a full car length, they're gonna put, squeeze the car in there and get their kids out and get them to school, it, it's just.
I mean, an alternative could be just no parking from, if, if you look straight, like where the entrance is to the soccer field there on Minnesota. Um, just south of that driveway, that's, that's nine twenty where this gentleman lives, if you just did no parking from like before his driveway at nine twenty up to McKinley Street, I think that would probably. Uh, alleviate the problem because, you know, people are just gonna, naturally gonna go over to the opposite side of the street and drop their kids off, because they're not gonna wanna walk. You know, that, and that's absolutely right, people just don't wanna walk that far, you know, but if you, if you just did no parking north of, you know, um. I can't remember what the address is, nine fourteen I think it is, if you did it from like nine fourteen north to, uh, McKinley Street, no parking on the east side. I don't, just a suggestion. Go ahead, Mike.
So you, but your proposal would free up two more parking stalls during the day? Your proposal that you'd move it up to the next, uh, where that goes in for the soccer field?
Like straight across on the east side?
So then, you would free up those two other parking stalls, currently that they're parking.
Yeah. I'll just suggest. Well, you could put the, you know, six to six restriction to it. Yep, you can, I mean, you could put a restriction you want from, you know, from that point to Cleveland, south to Cleveland also.
I guess then you're ignoring those last two driveways.
But I mean, I'm just saying, you're, but you're, you're addressing the problem of, you know, very walking across the street there, just like.
Walking across the street, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think, I think that you'll still have people parking in front of those two driveways.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, I think people will still park there, I guess, I mean, it's not that far, the entrance is here, right, it's right here?
It's the entrance.
Not down here, and so if you have people coming this way and you have them available to park, I would think they would still park and cross and come across the street, I mean, I think you would, you're still gonna have people crossing the street if you leave it open down on the end. I mean, I get that we want people to be able to park if they live there, but I think it's sort of dangerous still.
Yeah, like I said, I don't, my guess is, is we're not gonna come up with the right solution the first time.
Sure.
Um, and the other thing is, is I, I did, did talk to the, the lady that runs the daycare school and, you know, she's more than willing to get memos out to the parents, so that's the other thing, is we can really push from their end. You're not to be parking on the opposite side of the street, we don't want kids crossing the road and, you know, you can do all that unless there's a sign there with a fine attached to it that says you can't park here. It's not gonna probably sink in, but I think starting anywhere is gonna be a, an improvement in the right direction and we just can, you know, go with what we feel is our best option at this point and. Just like I said, treat it temporarily and maybe, you know, we, the village is gonna end up having to buy the signs, so we're gonna have to end up buying, you know, cheaper signs right away and maybe some vinyl signs just to, if we wanna do a temporary solution. And, and then paint, we're gonna have to paint.
So what are we, I mean, what is everybody in agreement of, so like from McKinley to the drop-off at the, or to the bus stop? Like short of that sidewalk there, that would be what?
So, on the red, where it's red right now, so I would propose from McKinley Street down to about where the roof changes colors.
Yeah.
Is calling that out as twenty-minute parking, six AM to six PM. And the, right now, there's no parking allowed there any other, like it's busing only, you can't park there any other time of the day, okay?
Yes, they do?
They do, okay.
Oh, yeah, they do, they.
They do, but they're not supposed to, so I guess it would just.
Make it legal.
You could make it legal, you just say twenty-minute parking, um, six AM to six PM and then leave it open to parking after that.
And then from that bus stop, like forward with the blue?
The bus stop would be basically in the front of the entrance, you know, maybe sixty feet and then the blue would. It, it would also, the, initially we were thinking we would make all of that twenty-minute parking, six AM to six PM. The issue of the soccer game came up, so there's a, we talked about, let's change it at the, the drive entrance to the soccer field, from there forward, maybe, maybe call it out as two-hour parking, like.
I would agree with that, that's what we talked about, if we go from that driveway all the way to the corner, right, to McKinley for twenty-minute parking, right? Then what we're talking about?
To the driveway, yep, to the soccer field driveway.
No, I'm going the other way, I'm talking about twenty-minute parking in the other direction and then.
With the exception of the bus area, yep.
And the actual, other direction is two hours.
Yep, and then we could do six to six on both, we could do, cause the soccer game is probably about two hours and nobody's probably gonna check if it's three, right, so we'll just do six AM to six PM on both.
And if there's any way to shorten that period up, I would like to make sure we look at it.
Like the five PM or the four PM?
Yeah.
I'll talk to the school.
Or even five or five thirty?
Okay, so then on the east side?
The east side then, we would propose no parking from where it starts, the yellow starts, so the very southern yellow line, which would be the first driveway, from there all the way to McKinley. Be, uh, it would just say no parking Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM and we could look at shortening that up also.
If possible.
Is that?
In the other direction, we wanna go with what?
That would just stay, as is probably two-hour parking.
Two-hour parking?
We'd make it the same as the other side of the road, I, we don't wanna get into confusing either.
Otherwise, cause.
Yeah, make it too choppy?
Maybe some staff will sit over there and plug those up so that it's not available for, for short-term visits.
Do you have anything else, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
And does anybody have any questions on these proposed changes? How's that sound?
I think you could actually make, make it six to four, because actually at five o'clock, you know, there's not that many there.
And, and talking to the.
Most of it's like at three thirty and three o'clock.
The congestion.
And then early in the morning.
The eight thirty, eight fifteen, yeah, the eight fifteen, and she told me that's the worst, is like the eight fifteen timeframe, so. Um, and we can, we can talk to, I'll, I'll reach out to the school again about this and just talk through them with these suggestions and, you know, I'm, I'm sure Darren's gonna tell you too, that, you know, none of this is gonna be. Enforceable until we actually have it in ordinance, so for this meantime, when we go through this process and seeing how it's working, we're not gonna be able to issue citations based on what we have out there, because it's not truly an ordinance at that point, correct Darren? So, once we figure out how this is working and when we nail it down to what we wanna do, then we'll make the ordinance change.
Okay. So you're just gonna bounce it off some folks?
I'll bounce it off and we may, we'll go with this, we may end up tweaking it from their standpoint or what we come up with in the meantime a little bit, but we'll, this'll kinda be our direction.
Maybe in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Maybe bring it back in a couple of weeks with the draft and see.
Probably more like a month, yeah.
Okay, all right, cool, all right, well, thank you for coming, thank you for hearing, I appreciate it, I'm sorry, Darren.
Just so you know, we won't be able to paint anything until temperatures are above seventy degrees and.
Yeah, it might take a little more to implement it, so.
Yep.
We'll start with, uh, notifying the parents at the school, I think it'll be a, a nice start to it.
So then we'll bring that one back when we have a.
Just a quick question, Mike, is this a year-round too, I know the daycare is year-round, but the 4K and things like that, I mean, is that?
Yeah.
That's the only thing over there is the daycare, 4Ks.
They do, no, they do 4K there, yeah.
They do 4K, oh, I thought that was, oh, I thought that was completely gone, okay.
She told me that, so, but you're right, it's probably less in the summertime, but, you know.
The daycare's still there, so.
I think, Mike, I think the original plan was that 4K was gonna get moved over to Friendship and that, um, Trefort Center was going to be in this facility, but then they swapped those.
And made room for them over there, yeah, I knew the Trefort was going over there, but, okay, okay. All righty, so, then we'll bring that back. All right, moving on to communications, any communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business? Need a motion to go into closed session, please?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session. Discussion of personal, personnel issue under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reason requires a closed session. Item A, vacant property.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Horning, second by Price to go into closed session, can I get a roll call, please?
Horning.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Close session.